Okay. Ready? I'd like to call the meeting of the North Hill Rock Planning Commission to order, please.
You are unmuted.
I'm sorry? Okay. Mr. Spencer, would you call the roll, please?
Banks? Banks? Velasco?
Here.
Chambers?
Present.
Dietz?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
Phillips? Phillips?
Here.
Wallace? Wallace? White?
Here.
Banks? Is that him trying to talk? Okay. Uh, Wallace? Chairman Clifton?
Here.
Quorum's present.
Thank you. Uh, first, let's move to our approval of the minutes. You have been supplied a copy of the minutes from our previous meetings. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
Who for approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to be approved as submitted. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, there are four items, five items on our agenda that have been postponed or withdrawn. So if you are here for those items, you're welcome to stay with us, or you can be excused. Item number thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen on our agenda is special use case number twenty-eight to allow a daycare in an R2 at a 5301 Summer Tree has been postponed. Use case number twenty-twelve to allow a parking lot in a C6 zone at 901 Maple Street has been postponed. And case number twenty-three-eight, Block One, Lot Eighteen, for a duplex at 1306 Parker Street, has been withdrawn. Those have been withdrawn also, or postponed, but also withdrawn is special use case number twenty-sixteen to rezone from R4 to C4 on the eastern portion of the lot and conservation of the western portion of the lot to allow for a mini storage facility with a conservation space at thirty-three thousand North Hills Boulevard. Also withdrawn is the point at North Hills, Lot One R and Two, a replat of a mini storage facility at three thousand North Hills Boulevard. They have been withdrawn. So with that, we'll move into our regular agenda. Public hearing number twenty-two to amend the master street plan of North Hill Rock. Mr. David Cook? Mr. Tim Revis?
Tim Revis Planning. Uh, you've got three changes to the master street plan that are in front of you. Uh, the first two, I'm gonna go over, and then David's gonna go over the third one.
Okay.
Um, so we are, and this is, uh, from the Esplanade site plan that Planning Commission reviewed a couple of months ago. Uh, the bike plan, uh, that's running through that property. We are proposing to remove, uh, the bike path that was going through the property and adding, so removing is one, number one, removing the bike path that was going through the middle of the development. And then we are also proposing to, uh, add, uh, along River Road, a bike lane. So there, there was a bike route that's there now, but the lane would be, um, an additional pavement, um, that's running along River Road in front of the Esplanade development.
Okay.
David will talk about.
And for y'all, those of y'all that don't know me, my name's David Cook, one of the city engineers. Um, and this is for, do we have a visual for Denton Road, some of the development that's, it'd be a new location, kinda just near the North Hill Rock Sherwood City Limits line, north of Sylvan Hills. Um, we're wanting to put this on the master street plan as a collector, just based on, we, planning and engineering are both in agreement that it's a long enough stretch. And with the master, the future plan that we were given showing that these decent-sized apartment complex and little residential roads spinning off of it, that it would warrant being a collector, which, I mean, if just a collector would pretty much give us a forty-foot from back-to-back of the curb, roughly eighteen-foot lanes, two eighteen-foot lanes versus a local road's twenty-seven-foot back-to-back curb.
Okay, is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Spencer, or Mr. Chambers?
Yes, David, is parking allowed on both sides of a collector's street?
I believe so, is that correct? Yes, both sides, which eighteen feet, is that, is North Hills hard?
Eighteen feet leaves.
Eighteen foot is sufficient enough for on-street parking and without crossing over.
Spencer, uh, Mr. Chambers?
On the bike lane, has the developer, uh, proposed to, uh, make the improvements on both sides of the street, or just on their side of the property's street?
A bike lane is just a one-way, uh, one-way on that side.
Just on their side of the street, then, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Spencer, is this, uh, something that has to be come before three times?
It does not, so we've done the, all the notice required by state law, sorry. All the notice done for state law for this meeting, then it will go to city council for final, so you guys are gonna make a recommendation to city council on these three items, so, uh, we could vote separately on them, or as a whole, it'd be up to, up to you.
Do you wanna, someone make a motion to, uh, we accept all three as a whole?
I move to accept all three revisions as a whole.
Motion made and seconded that we accept all three of the master street plan proposal, proposed changes. Uh, anyone in the audience that would speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? On the application for the change of all three of the master street plan, please, uh, now call the roll, please.
So this is to combine them all together?
This is combined all together.
So this would be a vote to combine the three master street plan requests into one vote. Banks? Velasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace? Wallace? White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes, the application and recommendation from the Planning Commission, uh, will be forwarded to the city council that all three of these be accepted.
That vote was just to combine them, we need a vote to accept them.
Okay. All right, the previous vote was to combine all three.
Move to accept all three.
Motion made and seconded that we accept all three. Uh, please call the roll.
Banks? Velasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace? White? And Chairman Clifton?
Yes, the application did pass. Okay, uh, due to a conflict of interest, we want to move item number eight, re, uh, subdivision case twenty-twenty-fourty-seven, uh, to be heard at this time, Mr. Chambers?
Yes, sir, SD twenty, hold on.
Number eight?
I've got to get down to it. Unusual format for me, so. Oh, I'm hunting for it, sir. Stand alone. Everything's mixed up, so I've gotta locate it among here. There it is, found it. The Design Review Committee considered item SD twenty-twenty-fourty-seven, Denton Road Edition, Block One, Lots Two through Twelve, a preliminary plat, site plan review for duplexes on Denton Road. The applicant was present and agreed to items one through twelve and subsections, and the develop, Design Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded this application be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Well, no.
Aye.
Wait a minute, we've gotta call the roll on this. Please call the roll.
Banks? Velasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace? White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Okay, uh, see, Mr. Spencer, and you can, he can tell you where to go next, thank you. Uh, we'll move into our regular agenda, item number four, conditional use case twenty-twenty-thirteen to allow a car wash in a C3 zone at forty-three-fifteen McCain Boulevard. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Please come forward.
I'm Vernon Williams with Garnet Engineering, I'd answer any questions you have.
Uh, this has been before the Design Review Committee, and, uh, were presented with, uh, some recommendations, and do you agree with those recommendations?
Yes.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this rezoning? Any comments from any of the commissioners? On the application, please call the roll, as submitted, please call the roll.
Banks? Velasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips? Junior?
Yes.
Wallace? White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes, the application did pass, see, Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what your next would be, thank you. Item number five, SD twenty-fourty-five, Mr. Chambers?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the Development Review Committee, uh, met and considered item SD twenty-twenty-fourty-five, Tom Salmon, subdivision, Lot One, site plan review of a car wash at forty-three-fifteen McCain Boulevard. This is the, uh, Site Plan Review Committee's report on the previous item. Item one, uh, they developed, the applicant was present, they, we discussed items one through nine and subsections, and the applicant agreed to those, and the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded this application be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this application?
Yeah, I'm Vernon Williams with Garnet Engineering, I'd answer any questions you have.
Any questions from any of the commissioners? On the application, please call the roll.
Banks? Velasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips? Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace? White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass, see, Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what to do next. Mr. Chambers?
Yeah, just call tomorrow.
Develop, Development Review Committee, uh, considered item SD twenty-twenty-fourty-two, Collins Industrial Park, Lot Twelve RRR and Sixteen RR, replat and site plan review of an expansion of West Rock Coffee at Thirty Collins Industrial Drive. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through twelve and subsections, and Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded this application be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this application? Any comments from the commissioners? On the application as submitted, please call the roll.
Banks? Velasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace? White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes, your application did pass, see, Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what to do next, thank you. Item number nine, Mr. Chambers?
Item seven.
I'm sorry, item seven?
SD twenty-twenty-fifty, Collins Industrial Park, Lot Sixteen RR, site plan review of a new building for West Rock Coffee at Thirty-Eight Collins Industrial. Applicant was present, agreed to items one through nine and subsections, and Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded this application be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? All in favor of the application as submitted, please call the roll.
Velasco?
Yes.
Uh, Banks? Chambers?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips? Junior?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes, your application did pass, see, Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what to do next, thank you. Item number nine, Mr. Chambers?
SD twenty-twenty-fourty-eight, uh, Park Hill Edition, Block Thirty-Five, Lot A2R, replat to move a drainage easement on a residential lot located at Four Ten West A Avenue. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through six and subsections, and Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded this application be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? On the application, please call the roll.
Banks? Velasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips? Junior?
Yes.
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes, your application did pass, see, Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what to do next, thank you. Item number ten, Mr. Chambers?
SD twenty-twenty-fourty-nine, Copper's Edition, Lot Two, preliminary plat and site plan review of a tie treatment facility at Twenty-Two-O-One Edmund Street. Applicant was present, agreed to items one through ten and subsection, and the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded this application be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? On the application as submitted, please call the roll.
Banks? Velasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace? Wallace?
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Anyone, uh, the application did pass, see, Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what to do next, thank you. Next item on the agenda is number eleven, rezone case number twenty-twenty-fifteen to amend the land use plan from single-family to quiet business and to rezone property from R4 to a C1 to allow for a house to be converted to office and classroom space at Six-O-Eight North Vine Street. Is the applicant here?
Good evening, I'm John Payne, I represent Shorter College, the applicant.
Yes, sir, and you're wanting to do what?
We are wanting to convert the space at Six-O-Eight Vine Street, which is now currently a residential home, into office and classroom space. The university, or the university bought it about a year or so ago after the city was about to condemn it, to basically save it from itself, and we've, in that time, we have maintained the, uh, property around it, we've been, with the initial, excuse me, did the initial, um, site work on it to make sure that it was viable and to make our plans out for the actual use of the building, and now that we have been basically cramped with, uh, COVID-19 regulations, we are definitely in need of a bit more extra space, and we'd like to go ahead and get work to work on rehabbing the building and to use as quickly as possible.
Is the property at Six-O-Four, is it, uh, still a single-family?
I'm sorry.
The property at Six-O-Four, is it a single-family?
At Six-O-Four?
Next door?
Yes, it is a single-family as well.
And the two vacant lots beside of it?
The two vacant lots are basically single-family sites as well.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
They're, but they're empty lots now?
There, there is an empty lot next to Six-O-Four, that is correct.
Okay. Have you had any opposition on this, Mr. Spencer?
Received no phone calls on it, or what?
Mr. Revis? Excuse us, let him come to the roster.
Planning has received a phone call that, um, not necessarily for sure against, but had some concerns, and so they asked some questions, and we kinda just told them what was going on.
Okay, Mr. Chambers?
Uh, yes, Mr. Spencer, um, rezoning this property C1 adjacent to a, uh, R2 property, uh, R, R4, I'm sorry, property, uh, is there any special fencing or buffering required between commercial and residential? And is the applicant prepared to comply with that?
Yeah, the back page of your packet there, uh, they've hired Leahy Engineers, and he's done a drawing showing a fence and, and the appropriate plantings and appropriate parking. So they, they've hired a, a professional to meet the codes, so at the moment, at the time, the drawing was, well, at the current moment, it meets all the regulations.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Spencer? I, I saw this plant, uh, survey that they did for how they're gonna develop the property, uh, which is good, but will they still need to come back, uh, through the Site Development Committee and for site plan approval? Cause this is only for, I guess, um, rezoning.
Yes, we, we would need to come back through for site plan review, and when we can do that through the process fairly quickly, since the drawings are already done.
I just wanted to make sure you knew.
Yeah, we, we are, we're prepared, we, we were trying to work through the permit process, and we were told we had to get rezoned first, so we're.
Now, this is the right procedure you're going.
So we're just going through the procedure, yes, sir.
But thank you for providing additional information for us.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I have received calls in opposition to this, uh, in the fact that this is residential, and when you're crossing over the street, you're going in to the residential area, creating commercial. There is a, I'm, I'm aware of a petition signed by these people in this block, that every one of them has signed this position, petition in opposition to this rezoning. Have you spoken with the neighbors down there about this?
We have not, I do not know about that petition, sir.
Okay.
Staff has not been contacted about it at all.
Sorry?
Uh, planning staff has not been contacted at all about a petition or any opposition, just one, Tim had received a call about what's going on. Type statement, not necessarily against it or for it, but what's going on.
Mr. Chambers?
Out of an abundance of caution, uh, I'd like to ask the applicant, would you be, uh, is there an emergency, would you be willing to postpone for one month and speak to your neighbors and, and give them reassurances and such?
Yeah, there's no initial emergency, other than just wanting to go ahead with the procedure, so, um, if we are provided information to, of the petition, and the neighbors speak to, we, we more than happy to speak with them.
I, I think it'd be a lot better, uh, if you just paused for one month and just asked, got the neighbors together and said, this is what we're planning on doing, we're not gonna convert it to a convenience store, whatever, you know, they may be worried about, okay? So, uh, it sounds like you're offering more of an office use than a retail use, and that may be their concern.
That is exactly what we're using it, it's for office space.
Some, some zoning ordinances, rather than zoning everything commercial, actually have O-one, O-two, O-three, C-one, C-two, C-three, O being for office, so that kind of reassures a neighbor that it's just for office, but our, our zoning ordinance doesn't work that way, thank you.
Let me ask you something, does the college own any of the other properties on that block?
On that block, no, sir. No, I, I, I'm correct, they actually own the, uh, off, office, the building, um, I apologize for not having the address meant, it's, um, Seven-O-One Pine Street, Seven Hundred Pine Street, Fine Street, I'm sorry, as well. It's, so it's on the next block over at the corner.
That's on the north side of the college.
Yes, sir, right across the street.
That shows on their map up there, yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is Steve White.
Yes, sir.
Uh, here, here's my comment, cause of, you know, kinda grew up with my grandmother's on the other side of the, the interstate there. You know, sooner or later, the college, cause Shorter is growing, they're going, just like all, a lot of colleges, the University of Arkansas, UCA, or whatever, they're gonna end up with those homes one day, sooner or later. Uh, so I, I think it's gonna happen anyway, and the school right now, as, as he said, they need space because of COVID-19 and spreading out, and it also says classrooms in there. Anyway, I don't, I, if, if this petition was, was there, then I would agree with Mr. Chambers on that, but the petition right now, nobody's seen it, we haven't got any calls, I don't know why we would wanna delay this a month, uh, and delay progress for, for this college, uh, because sooner or later, they're, they're probably gonna own those other homes sooner or later and, and develop them, just like they've developed the area in the last twenty years. So I, I think it's personally a waste of time to wait a month, when no one showed up today, we don't have a petition, we got one call, and it was just curious. So, looking at that and driving by it all the time, I, I just think, well, just go ahead and approve this and move on, uh, on that, and if there is opposition, then in the, uh, city council, then that opposition can be made there, and the city council can make their decision. But I think it's a waste of time to wait, especially with COVID-19, uh, affecting the school, and needing the kids, young adults, in class.
Okay, thank you, Mr. White.
This comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Foster?
I, I kinda liked, uh, Mr. Chambers' suggestion there, maybe for a different reason, but I thought it'd be a good opportunity for the college to kinda promote a good neighbor policy there, to get involved and to get to know your neighbors, and, um, that may facilitate, you know, a smooth acquisition of property in the future and whatever, and if you don't have any emergency here, um, let's, um... And if you don't have any emergency here, um, let's, um, if you don't have a pose, I would, I'd still recommend us postponing it, but it's up to you if you want to do that.
Anyone in the audience?
Do we have someone in the audience in opposition to this application? Please come forward and give us your name.
My name is Connie Young, and I live at 609 North Cedar Street. My house is, the house that he's talking about is directly behind mine. And, um, we've lived in the neighborhood for a long time, and today I'm representing these people that I have assigned copyright with their names on it. We're saying that although we support the educational advancement and expansion of Shorter College, our opposition to the rezoning is precedent to the college having other options other than that house, because if it makes it C3, then it, it will just encroach on us. We highly recommend, we highly regard Shorter College and its value particular, there's no other place other than coming toward our houses. So do they, they have other properties that they can use without having to make that a C3, C1 rather, and, and take away our residents.
Okay. How many do you have on your petition? Thank you. Mr. Foster?
No, you asked the same question. Are the majority of them in, live on your same block there?
Uh, the, the blocks, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, seeing opposition here with the petition, uh, Mr. Green, uh, would you like to consider Mr. Chambers' recommendation that, or suggestion that you might postpone and talk to the residents and bring this back? Thank you, Ms. Young.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, given that this is the first we've heard of the opposition, um, I am fairly new to the college, I've been there, uh, since about February or so, and so, so, so far, my interaction with the neighbors and folks around the college, really in the neighborhood, has been very cordial and, and very, very, very good. But, Senator, this is the very first we've heard about the, the oppositions, so we've gone through the process for the rezoning, and we've been, I guess we've been telegraphing the, the need to do this. Uh, we will, um, postpone, and I will, um, refer to the zoning commission for the procedures for that to, um, to re, to re, to reapply for rezoning, and I guess in about a month.
Okay, I think that all you need to do now is just request a postponement until next month. There won't be any formal, anything to do with, uh, paperwork or anything, just request that now, and it can be postponed until the next month's meeting.
And I request that we postpone this till next month's meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Green. Okay, the, this item has been postponed until next month.
Uh, Mr. Spencer, do we need to vote, vote to postpone or just postpone that request?
We don't have to vote and postpone.
Yes, since he's, he's agreed to it, we're, it's his, he's making the request to postpone.
So we would vote if no one had agreed to it, right? Got it. Thank you.
Okay, item number 12, conditional use case number 20-14 to allow a biohazardous storage and cleanup business at 10 Collins Industrial Park. Is the applicant here? Please come forward and give us your name.
I'm Samuel Shipman, I'm representing Aftermath Services.
I'm sorry, give it again.
Oh, I'm Samuel Shipman, I'm representing Aftermath Services.
Uh, have you been made aware of the conditions to be considered about this?
Yes, sir.
And you agree with those?
Yes, sir.
Has there been any, uh, comments from the neighborhood or anything on this application?
We received one call from an immediate neighbor that was concerned that, uh, this type of use with the biohazards would devalue the property, and if there was a spill, he had some concerns. I'd given him the phone number to call, and I, I don't know if they called or anything, but we did receive from an immediate neighbor, so I'm not sure if it's the one to the east or to the west, but it was one, one of the neighbors.
Okay. Uh, the staff recommendation is approval with the conditions that have been recommended. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this application? Or there any comments from the commissioners? On the application as submitted, please call the roll.
Banks? Bellasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass. See Mr. Spencer and he can tell you what to do next. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next order of business is our public comment. Anyone? Your motion?
I move.
Motion made and seconded, we be adjourned. Aye?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.[1773.36]